You're live, Council President.
Very well. Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Good evening, council members. On behalf of the Patterson Municipal Council, I welcome you to the regular meeting of the municipal council. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Yes, Council President. Roll call for municipal council regular meeting of May 14, 2020. Councilman Abdelaziz?
Present.
Councilwoman Cotton? Councilman Jackson? Councilman Kali?
Present, Madam Clerk.
Councilman McCoy?
Here.
Councilwoman Mims?
I'm here.
Councilman Rivera? Councilman Velez?
Present, Madam Clerk.
Madam President?
Present.
The vote is six present, three absent.
Very well, okay, let us proceed today with this evening's prayer.
Yes, Madam President. Prayer this evening is being rendered by Elder William C. McCoy, Third Ward Councilman, which will be followed by the flag salute by the Honorable Maritza Dab.
Thank you, Madam President, Madam Clerk, for that distinction this evening. Let us pray. Most righteous and eternal God, we thank you for your goodness and for your mercy. We thank you for your love towards us. Lord, thank you for this day which you have made, causes us to rejoice and to be glad in it. And as we come as a municipal council, united in one spirit and one heart, to do what we all and to serve our community, we ask for your blessing. Even though I ask that you might grant us wisdom, knowledge, and understanding, that we might rightly divide those things that are presented before us. Bless our mayor and his administration, and every employee of our municipal city. We ask you to remember those who have lost loved ones since last we met. We ask for your guidance as we deliberate. Ask you to might bless our city, those that are mourning. Remember our beloved colleague, Councilwoman Cotton, as she mourned the loss of her husband, and those who have lost loved ones over this period of time. We put everything into your hand because we know that thou art a capable and able God. Bless us now we pray as we give all things unto you and give you thanks, Christ, amen.
Amen, amen. Thank you very much. I'm council members. The flag suit. I pledge allegiance to the
United States of America and to the
We stand one faith under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. It's time. I'd like a moment of silence for our troops and for anyone who has lost a loved one. Thank you very much. Alright, so, Councilmember Rivera in? No, he's not. Alright, council members? Okay, so, at this time, is Councilwoman Rivera in? No, okay. We're gonna go with second reading ordinances. Actually, no, let's do the consent agenda.
Madam President?
Yes.
I didn't do the statement of compliance.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm totally sorry. I'm ready to go.
Okay, thank you. Statement of compliance with the Open Public Meetings Law for 2019, 2020. The meeting of May 14, 2020, at Severnham. Notice of this meeting was compiled and disseminated in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Law in the following manner. The annual notice of regular meetings and workshop sessions of the municipal council was compiled for the year 2019, 2020 on or about July 1, 2019. A schedule of the regular meetings and workshop sessions of the municipal council for the year 2019, 2020 was duly transmitted on or about July 1, 2019 to the North Jersey Herald News, The Record, The Arabic Voice, The Italian Voice, The Perseid County Post, Dominican News, The Quesca International, El Especial, The Patterson Press, The City Post, Tap into Patterson, in addition to any other publication duly requesting such notices. The schedule of the regular meetings and workshop sessions of the municipal council for the year 2019, 2020 was prominently posted in the lobby of City Hall, first floor in the place reserved for the announcements of this type. Schedule of the regular meetings and workshop sessions of the municipal council for the year 2019, 2020 was duly filed with the municipal clerk. A copy of the schedule of regular meetings of the municipal council was mailed to any person who requested and paid the fee authorized by the Open Public Records Act.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. This time I'll take motion, payment of bills. Councilman Rivera?
You have to give me a minute. I'm looking for the bills list.
Okay, very well.
My phone, yes.
You got it?
Want to take number one? I found the council president.
Thank you very much, Councilman Rivera.
Payment of bills for May 14, 2020. We have total payments of $1,552,603.21. There's no payroll this period.
Very well, do you have a second? Do I have a second?
Sorry.
Okay, second by Councilwoman Mims?
Councilman.
Councilman Velez?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I know there's no payroll payment on it. Which one is the bill, the highest bill there for?
You mean the vendor?
Yeah. Not the name, the amount.
It says general cover me, $427,000.
No, the highest one, other statutory expenditures at $813.36. It's on the list that was emailed to all of us that do all the payments.
Councilman Jackson? Councilman Jackson, there is no solid waste.
Okay.
Please tell. Anyone have any other questions? Okay, roll call, Madam Clerk, I'm paying the bills.
Yes, Council President. Roll call on the payment of bills for the regular meeting of May 14, 2020. Councilman Abdelaziz?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman Kali?
Yes.
Councilman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mims?
Yes.
Councilman Rivera?
Yes.
Councilman Velez?
Yes, Madam Clerk.
Council President?
Yes.
The vote is eight yes, one absent. The payment of bills is hereby adopted.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. I'll take the consent agenda.
Yes, Council President.
Item 13 through 22.
Council President, can somebody send me the agenda? I didn't receive my package. What is the revised agenda?
Council President, I will gladly be forward to this issue and get that to you so we could move the meeting along. And provide councilmen from the fifth floor.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman, in this attachment, the resolutions are also attached to it also. There's an agenda in all the resolutions.
Thank you, you're so great. And that's why I like to be my neighbor, thank you.
Anybody else want it?
Glad to see Councilman McCoy also.
Send it to me too, you should be such a nice gentleman.
They like to be a mayor of the sixth floor.
Anything from my colleagues. I'm gonna send it to all council right now.
You don't need to send it to me.
I'm still running a post, but alright. Such a good mood today, I tell you.
So, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Council President.
I'm waiting for the, I mean, I'm sorry. Correct, items 13 through 22.
Okay, so, the first item, item number 13, resolution authorizing the solicitation of bids?
No, my apologies. Madam Clerk, you just have to read the top and just say all matters listed.
Alright, okay, you're right, sorry.
That's okay.
All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the council and will be enacted by one motion. The items listed under the consent agenda are numbers 13 through 22. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda by request of any council member, and if so removed, will be treated as a separate matter.
Move.
Move by Councilwoman Mims, second by Councilman Velez. Yes, Madam Clerk, move by Councilwoman Mims and second by Councilman Velez. Roll call, Madam Clerk, on items 13 through 22 on the consent agenda.
Yes, Council President. Roll call on items 13 through 22 on the consent agenda. Councilman Abdelaziz?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mims?
Yes.
Councilman Rivera?
Yes.
Councilman Velez?
Yes.
Council President?
Yes.
Vote is eight yes, one absent. The consent items are hereby adopted.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Okay, this time I'll take item one on the second reading.
Yes, Council President. The first item is a bond ordinance amending and supplementing bond ordinance number 14-042 by for the resurfacing of various roads throughout the city and related improvements in and by the city of Patterson in the county of Passaic, state of New Jersey, on September 16, 2014, as recently amended and supplemented here to form to amend the description set for hearing. It's a finance ordinance number 20-029.
So, move.
Okay, move by Councilman Kali, second by Councilman Abdelaziz. The public hearing is now end, Councilwoman Mims?
I think it was me first.
Councilman Velez? Is who I hear first?
Oh, I'm clear.
Okay. The public hearing is now open for item number one on second reading. Madam Clerk, if you can please give the number out. So, anyone, corporation council is there, right? Corporation council? Corporation council?
I'm here.
Okay, I just want to put on record again. We are in the public hearing for item number one on second reading. So, when I open the public hearing, it will be for this item? Yes. Okay, very well. So, Madam Clerk, can you please state the number? So, anyone that wants
Yes, Council President. For those Sure, for those who would like to participate in the public portion and item number one, they can call 973-321-1579 and enter the meeting ID number 7116800071. Again, the number to call is 973-321-1579 and the meeting ID number is 7116800071.
Very well, we'll give it a minute or two. Please let me know.
Yes, yes.
So, you know one calling move to close the public portion?
One second, we have to give. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Council President. There is no one for the public portion. No one is calling, Council President.
Okay, move to close the public hearing on item number one by Councilman Velez. Do I have a second? Second by Councilwoman Mims. Roll call, Madam Clerk, to close the public hearing on item number one.
Sure, Council President. Roll call to close the public portion on item number one. Councilman Abdelaziz?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman Kali?
Yes.
Councilman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mims?
Yes.
Councilman Rivera?
Yes.
Councilman Velez?
Before I vote, I just want to say that I'm waiting for my agenda. Abdelaziz, please, my vote is yes.
I don't know why it starts setting from my phone. I just connected to the wifi on my phone.
Guys, not everyone can speak at the same time. Okay, okay, so the public hearing is now closed. Madam Clerk, roll call on item number one for approval.
Roll call for item number one. Councilman Abdelaziz?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So, just to be clear, I mean, I'm definitely in full agreement with the community that our roads are in desperate need of being resurfaced. At this point, I've really lost a lot of faith and confidence in the administration on whether or not it's the competency level of getting these things done. And I'm still adamant that we need to bring some of these services home and making sure that some of these revenues, not only the revenue stays in our community, but all the roads get addressed. I still have not been spoken to on some of the needs in the first ward in regard to some of the roads that have not been done. And I think there's a gross oversight of some of these segments in my community of what needs to be done. So, at the moment, Madam Clerk, my vote is no.
Okay, Councilman Kali?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'm glad to see some of the votes from the second ward are included in this ordinance. My vote is yes.
Councilman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mims?
And so, I want to thank the administration. I pushed really hard for Montgomery Street and for Manor Road, and I'm grateful to see that it's being approved tonight. Thank you so much to the administration. Thank you to all the residents that have called me and we've met on many occasions. And I'm grateful to see that tonight we're getting this approved so that we could resurface those roads and all the other roads that are throughout the city of Patterson. My vote is yes.
Councilman Rivera?
So, I just want to remind my colleagues and residents that this was an effort, a combined effort with the council. The initial initiative from the administration was to give them a blanket ordinance allowing the mayor to pick the roads that he, you know, felt were in need. So, by the administration submitting a list to us, we were able to work together. And this is a combined effort on deciding which roads should be fixed at the city. My vote is yes.
Councilman Velez?
I want to concur with my colleague Flavio Rivera. Yes, we received the notice of it. And first of all, I want to commend Billy Willbrieth, the DBW director, and the engineering of the city pass on frame of ground for the duly work that they did in conjunction with this administration, keeping us informed and to address us which one was more needed in our ward. So, the rest of East 21st Street between 20th Avenue all the way down to Park Avenue is going to get resurfaced. Congratulations to Martha Arizobia, and she gave me this street two years ago with pictures and lists of neighbors, signatures and everything. And I gave it to the past administration, and finally, this administration moved forward to do it. So, looking forward to pave another 15 more streets that I put in the list moving forward. My vote is yes.
Councilman Abdelaziz?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So, I gotta piggyback on some of my council colleagues have stated when it comes to this proposal right here. This is something from an amended bond from four years ago, and the council has brought it to the table to look at ways to be strategic when we resurface our roads. Primarily, throughout the city, you see P, S, E, and G doing work, and they usually come and repave half a block. So, most of these roads, the other half will get paved. So, it's not just a half-done project. So, just like Councilman Velez, I do have to give a special shout-out to some of my residents. And I know Councilman Rivera, Councilman Dabla is at large, and Councilwoman Mims. My residents probably have reached out to you, especially at Delaware Ave, Ms. Reed and the Crackers, Ms. Jones, who just celebrated her 75th birthday. They tell her, he's been on me for two years and letting me know that Delaware Ave needs to be paved. So, I'm glad to announce that Delaware Ave, Michigan Ave, Florida Ave, Timothy Street, Robert Street, Elk Street, Hamlock Street, will be repaved in the sixth ward. I gotta commend the administration for, you know, opening up their doors and allowing us to work together to get this done. Because this is something from past administrations. We worked hard, we worked on our engineer, our director in the administration. And I'm very proud because the infrastructure need work that our streets need is daily. And I'm happy that this council is tackling this issue along with our administration. So, I thank Mayor Andre Seiya for knowing the needs of the sixth ward. He's no stranger. I know Councilman McCoy, he moved to the third ward, but he knows the needs of the sixth ward. So, thank you, Mayor, thank you, BA. And I proudly, I'm very happy. You know, when it comes to roads, I take them very, very serious. So, my vote is yes.
Madam President?
I think everyone here has said what needs to be said. Madam Clerk, my vote is yes. On item number one for approval.
Thank you, Council President. The vote is seven yes, one no, and one absent. Item number one is hereby adopted.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, item number two?
Yes, Council President. Item number two is an ordinance establishing always of control at intersection of Beach Street and Cedar Street sponsored by Councilman Louis Velez. It's ordinance number 20-030.
Ever motion? Councilman Velez? Councilman, move by Councilman Jackson? Do you have a second? Do I have a second?
If Councilman Velez wants to move it, um...
He's not on?
Huh? He's not on, okay.
Okay, second by Councilman, that was Councilman McCoy, right?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Okay, Madam Clerk, move by Councilman Jackson, second by Councilman McCoy. The public hearing is now open on item number two.
Thank you, Council President.
I move.
Read the number.
Yes, I will.
Oh, okay.
For those who are interested in participating in the public portion in item number two, please call 973-321-1579, ID number 7116800071. Again, 973-321-1579, ID number 7116800071.
Very well, we'll wait for a few.
Can you hear me, Council President, any chance?
Yes, I hear you.
Alright, now it's working.
Yeah.
Now how it was told in the, now I can get it up, yeah.
Yeah, I called you a few times, though.
I was hitting it, but I don't know what's, I was listening to you, but I don't know what happened with that. I think it was my internet problem.
Do you have your agenda, Councilman Vos?
I'm trying to go follow with your one.
But did you receive the email or no?
Let me check because I was trying
Councilman McCoy, I sent it to you guys. I think you guys, it went through.
I already saved it.
Alright.
Listen, I received an email from Abdelaziz, the sixth woman here.
Madam Clerk, is there anyone?
Is there anyone? Council President, there are no speakers for the public portion.
Okay, very well. Can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Oh.
Move by Councilman Velez, do I have a second? Second, Councilman Jackson. Roll call, Madam Clerk, to close the public hearing on item number two.
Yes, Council President. Roll call to close the public portion on item number two. Councilman Abdelaziz?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman Kali?
Yes.
Councilman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mims?
Yes.
Councilman Rivera?
Keep going.
Councilman Velez?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
So, it's one absent, seven present, two absent, I'm sorry, it's seven present, Council President.
Thank you very much. Roll call, Madam Clerk, on item number two for approval.
Roll call on item number two for approval. Councilman Abdelaziz?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman Kali?
Yes.
Councilman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mims?
Yes.
Councilman Rivera?
Yes.
Councilman Velez?
Thank you, colleague, my vote is yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
The vote is eight yes, one absent. Item number two is hereby adopted.
Thank you very well. Thank you very much. Council members, items three and four have to be tabled for the May 26 regular meeting. There was an issue with advertising. I know that our clerks submitted it, but I think the paper actually omitted it. Am I correct, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Madam President. The paper omitted to publish on the date we requested it to be published.
So, items three and four are tabled. So, that's for item five. One, sorry?
I got a question. Just to, yeah, just to make sure. Do the newspaper get sanctioned when this happen? Any chance?
Well, Councilman, things can happen. I mean, we don't know what exactly happens, so...
No, because if we don't do it right, we get penalized for the public act dealings. So, you know, I just asked him, yeah.
Okay, thank you. So, Madam Clerk? Okay, thank you. So, um, Madam Clerk, uh, can you please read, uh, number five to the letter?
Yes, yes, Council President. Item number five is a second reading ordinance. It's ordinance establishing always stop control at the intersection of Madison Street and Cedar Street. It's sponsored by Councilman Louis Velez and it's ordinance number twenty dash zero three three.
Move.
Move by Councilman Velez to have a second? Have a second?
Yes.
Second by Councilman Jackson.
Okay.
The public hearing is now open on item number five.
The number to call for the public hearing for those who would like to participate is nine seven three, three two one, one five seven nine. The meeting ID number is seven, one, one, six eight zero, 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 seven one. Again, please call nine seven three, three two one, one five seven nine, and enter meeting ID number seven, one, one, six eight zero, 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 seven one to participate.
Okay, we'll give them a minute or two. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Council President.
Is there anyone on the call?
No one, no one is yet.
This time I ask, uh, you have a motion to close the public hearing? Move to close the public hearing on item number five by Councilman Velez to have a second?
Second.
Who was that?
Kalik.
Councilman Kalik.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, second by Councilman Kalik. A roll call, Madam Clerk, to close the public hearing on item number five.
Yes, Council President. Roll call to close the public hearing on item number five, Councilman Abdelaziz?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson? Councilman Kalik?
Yes.
Councilman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mims?
Yes.
Councilman Rivera? Councilman Velez? Madam President?
Yes.
The vote is six in favor, three absent.
No, Madam Clerk, uh, Councilman Jackson is on.
See?
Yes, yes.
Oh, I didn't hear him, so I'm sorry. Oh, since yes, okay.
Okay, very well. Madam Clerk, at this time, uh, roll call on item number five for approval.
Roll call on item number five for approval, Councilman Abdelaziz?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman Kalik?
Yes.
Councilman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mims?
Yes.
Councilman Rivera? Councilman Velez?
Thank you, colleagues, yes.
Council President?
Yes.
The vote is one absent, seven present, or seven yes, two absent, I'm sorry. Councilman Rivera didn't answer.
He's on.
He's on, so, okay. So it's two absent and seven yes. The item is hereby adopted.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, item number six?
Yes, Council President. Item number six is a second reading ordinance as well. It's ordinance establishing an always stop control at the intersection of Twentieth Ave. and East Nineteenth Street, sponsored by Council President, Your Honor, Maritza Dabla, and it's ordinance number twenty dash zero three four.
Well, I'm, I'm moving this, uh, item. And it's second by Councilman Velez. The public hearing is now open on item number six.
Okay. If you would like to participate in this, um, in the public portion on this item, please call nine seven three, three two one, one five seven nine, and enter ID number seven, one, one, six eight zero, 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 seven one. And the telephone number is nine seven three, three two one, one five seven nine. ID number is seven, one, one, six eight zero, 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 seven one.
Madam Clerk, is there anyone?
No one, Council President.
Okay, can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Move.
Move by Councilman Velez, second by Councilman Jackson. Roll call, Madam Clerk, to close the public hearing on item number six.
Roll call to close the public hearing on item number six, Councilman Abdelaziz?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman Kalik?
Yes.
Councilman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mims?
Yes.
Councilman Rivera? Councilman Velez?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
The vote is seven yes and two absent.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, roll call on item number six for approval.
Roll call on item number six for approval, Councilman Abdelaziz?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman Kalik?
Yes.
Councilman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mims?
Yes.
Councilman Rivera? Councilman Velez?
Yes, Madam Clerk.
Council President?
Yes.
The vote is seven in favor, two absent. Item number six is hereby adopted.
Okay, um, oh, wait a minute. We closed, we just voted on this, right?
Yes. For approval.
For approval. So, um, before we move on, I just wanna just say that, um, I know that for quite a few years now, um, and specifically within the last year, there were many accidents uh, on the intersection of Twentieth Ave. and Nineteenth. And I, for one, witnessed various of them, and I know there were various, um, business owners there. And I'm gonna give a special shout out to Petronila Guzman, okay, from Petra's Fashion, uh, Hair Salon, uh, for pushing this, because I know that, um, it was a great concern, you know, to see the numerous accidents in that area, and hopefully this is going to help better the situation within that, um, intersection. So Councilman Velez, I know it's your ward, all right? I know they reached out, but you know...
No problem. It's done.
We work together, and we got this done. So I just wanna say thank you to my colleagues and, um, to Petronila, you know, we love you very much, and, um, and for the rest of the constituency in that area. Thank you very much.
Also, Council President, before, uh, they announce, uh, uh, before you go to the next one, I just wanna highlight that, uh, Hong Chao, our, uh, traffic engineer, uh, sent a, a analysis of all the questions and requests of it, so, uh, it, it will self-explain, uh, to support, to support this move. So I just wanna give them the commendation and to DPW employees, to, to, uh, Hong Chao and DPW director Billy Will Cletus.
All right, well, I'm happy everyone's doing their job, okay? So thank you very much. Um, Madam Clerk, uh, item number seven for, uh, second reading?
Yes, Council President. Item number seven is a second reading ordinance establishing an always stop control at the intersection of North Seventh Street. Read, sponsored by Councilman Michael Jackson, and it's ordinance number twenty dash zero three five.
Move?
Move.
Move, Councilman Jackson, and second by Councilman, uh, Velez and Councilman Kalik? I'm sorry.
Um, second, Councilman Kalik?
And Councilman Velez.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, the public hearing is now open on item number seven?
For those who are interested in, in, um, in the public portion in this item, please call nine seven three, three two one, one five seven nine, and enter meeting ID number seven, one, one, six eight zero, 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 seven one. Again, the telephone number is nine seven three, three two one, one five seven nine. Meeting ID is seven, one, one, six eight zero, 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 seven one.
Thank you very much.
Council President?
Councilman Jackson?
Yes, while we're waiting for, um, people to respond to the public, uh, hearing. Uh, I believe Mr. Hong Chao excluded, and we, we, we had a lengthy discussion and workshop with regard to the third stop at Clinton. I know it was, it was his recommendation that we did not, but, um, my recommendation was that we continue to have that one there. Um, much like North Seventh Street as it continues on into, uh, Elmo Park, where they place those very closely, um, block after block four-way stops for, for good reason. I think it's very important. I know since it's been excluded here now, but I wanna make sure that it makes it on the next, uh, agenda for Clinton and North Seventh as well. It hasn't been included here.
Okay, Madam BA, you're making a note? Okay. Okay, um, Madam Clerk, is there anyone there?
No, Council President.
I have a motion to close the public hearing on item number seven?
Move.
Move by Councilman Velez, second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Jackson. Roll call, Madam Clerk, to close the public hearing on item number seven.
Yes, Council President. Roll call to close the public portion on item number seven. Councilman Abdelaziz?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman Kalik?
Yes.
Councilman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mims?
Yes.
Councilman Rivera?
Yes.
Councilman Velez?
Yes.
Council President?
Yes.
Vote is eight yes, one absent.
The public hearing is now closed?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, roll call, Madam Clerk, uh, on item number seven for approval?
Roll call on item number seven for approval, Councilman Abdelaziz?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman Kalik?
Yes.
Councilman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mims?
Yes.
Councilman Rivera?
Yes.
Councilman Velez?
Yes.
Council President?
Yes.
The vote is eight in favor, one absent. Item number seven is hereby adopted.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk, item number eight?
Yes, Council President. Item number eight is also a second reading ordinance, establishing an always stop control at the intersection of North Seventh Street, and Cedar Street. It's sponsored by Councilman Michael Jackson, and it's ordinance number twenty dash zero three six.
Second.
Move by Councilman Jackson, second by Councilman Velez. The public hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, you don't need to repeat the number every single time, okay? The, the public hearing is now open on item number eight.
Move to close.
Madam Clerk, is there anyone there?
No, Council President.
Okay, uh, we have a motion to close the public hearing by Councilman Velez.
Second.
Second by Councilman Jackson. Uh, let their record reflect, um, that Councilman Abdelaziz and Councilman Kalik. Uh, it's now eight o'clock and they are breaking fast. Um, Madam Clerk, roll call?
Roll call to close the public portion. Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mims?
Yes.
Councilman Rivera?
Yes.
Councilman Velez?
Yes.
Council President?
Yes.
So the vote is six in favor, three absent. The public portion is hereby closed.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Roll call on item number eight for approval.
Roll call on item number eight for approval, Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman McCoy?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilman Rivera?
Yes.
Councilman Velez?
Yes, Madam Clerk.
Council President?
Yes.
The vote is six in favor, three absent. Item number eight is hereby adopted.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. This time we'll go to items nine, ten, and nine, ten, eleven, and twelve of the first reading. Madam Clerk, item number nine?
Item number nine, and the agenda is ordinance, establish, I'm sorry, ordinance repealing establishment of handicap parking spaces at various locations. Three Albion Ave., Two Hundred Lane Street, Eight Seventy-One East Twenty Third Street, Four Thirty-four Eastern Fifth Street, Seventy North Eighth Street, One Thirty-nine Carlisle Ave., Four Twenty-eight Park Ave., Ten Twenty-three East Twenty Fifth Street, Two Hundred Twelfth Ave., One Forty-two Lewis Street, Two O Eight East Nineteenth Street, Three Eighty-seven Eastern Second Street, and Five Fifty-five Seventeenth Ave.
Move.
Second.
Move by Councilman Velez, second by Councilwoman Mims. Roll call, Madam Clerk, on item number nine for first reading.
Roll call on item number nine for first reading. Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mims?
Yes.
Councilman Rivera?
Yes.
Councilman Velez?
Yes.
Council President?
Yes.
Vote is six in favor and three absent.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, item number ten for first reading?
Item number ten is an ordinance establishing handicap parking spaces at various locations on Contra Road and Four Six Four Madison Ave. on the west side.
Uh, Council President, uh, before we go?
Open.
Okay.
I just wanna make sure...
One second, Council, hold one second. Move by Councilwoman, uh, Mims, second? Have a second?
Second, second.
Second by Councilman Velez.
Discussion.
Councilman Velez.
I, I just wanna make sure that because this, the title says various row, and we only had one listed. So I wanna make sure that we miss it.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay, very good.
Yeah. Yeah. You know, when I say various rows and I see only one, I, I, it, it triggered me that probably they missed on the last meeting because I see the whole agenda. The whole agenda. First reading has more streets, that's why.
Well, this is the first read, this is the first reading. Did you see in our workshop?
Yeah, sorry, the workshop, agenda. I have more, more, more streets, so, so when I compare it with this one now.
Corporation Council?
Let me.
Corporation Council?
I'm here, Council President, so, in order to cure that, because it's a first reading, Madam Clerk would need to read the entirety of the resolution, uh, excuse me, the ordinance into the record till it's clear what the ordinance actually states, because she should have the actual copy of the ordinance.
All right, let me go on the ordinance and see what you, what it says.
It says establishing handicap parking spaces at various locations and county locations and county roads and the only, um, address there is four six four Madison Avenue on the west side. That is correct, Madam Clerk, but Councilman Velez is saying that in the workshop meeting, when we moved this for first reading, that there were other streets.
Uh, let me go check on the workshop agenda. I'm, I have the ordinance here, but nothing.
We could move with that one, I just, just in case, uh, if this comes, pops up and we go out next week, it's the first reading anyway.
Corporation Council, can we do that, that we can move forward with this one?
Anything that you voted on tonight, you can't change once you are moving to second reading. If you're adding to the ordinance, the ordinance will die and have to be brought back, so.
Yeah, what I said is.
Try to correct Madam Clerk, check.
Yeah, let, let, just, just again, let's move with this one.
Move workshop and see what.
Yeah, let's move with Swan, if it is, if, if they were left behind, then we could move for the next workshop, no problem.
Council for Madam?
There's just an ordinance with just one address, so let me check on workshop agenda.
Council President, based on what we got in workshop, there was only one address.
Okay, very good, uh, corporate, um, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Council President.
Councilwoman Mims has her, um, workshop agenda and there's only one street.
Okay, thank you.
So, I think probably it should read, it should have read, you know.
Should have read the, the address.
Okay, very well, as long as the ordinance is written correctly. Okay. Okay, so it was moved by Councilman Velez and second by Councilwoman Mims.
Oh, uh, uh, verse, uh, verse, I second, yeah.
Move, Ma- Madam Clerk, move by Councilwoman Mims and second by Councilman Velez. Roll call on item number ten for first reading.
Roll call on item number ten for first reading. Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman, uh, McCoy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mims?
Yes.
Councilman Rivera?
Yes.
Councilman Velez?
Yes, Madam Clerk.
Council President?
Yes.
Vote is six, yes, three absent. Item number ten is hereby, uh, uh, adopted and first reading.
Thank you very much, uh, Corporation Council. Item eleven and twelve are ordinances establishing handicap parking spaces in various locations. Can we take them both since our first reading and there's no public hearing? At the same time?
No, because they have to be advertised separately.
Okay, very well. I just wonder why they just kept all of it all in one? No, I'm saying in terms like when, when the ordinance is being done, but okay. Uh, Madam Clerk, uh, item eleven for first reading?
Yes, Council President. Item eleven is a first reading ordinance establishing handicap parking spaces at various locations on city roads. Two six seven Crosby Avenue, south side, plate number R three, one A G N, two eighteen Lawrence Place on the south side, ninety-four Nicobuck Avenue on Eagle Avenue side, west side, plate number T four seven, K H S, Tangier Street on the south side, plate number E four nine, M F J, one forty-seven Liberty Street on the north side, forty-two Monterey Avenue, south side, plate number Y five six, M S P, two ninety-five Jefferson Street, west side, plate number N S M, seven seven one, and one forty-nine Liberty Street, north side, plate number U three nine, L H F.
Hold on.
Move by Councilwoman Mims, you have a second?
Uh, I will second, but I got, I got a discussion, a, a short one.
Move by Councilwoman Mims and second by Councilman Velez, discussion, Councilman Velez?
Uh, Madam, 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 uh, Madam President, uh, this possible corporate council could answer this question. Um, knowing that we are publishing license plate and, and, and is any way that we could preserve the, the privacy of that license plate and put in, uh, like, like, still put the license plate, post a multiple ordinance and everybody will know that is already, because we don't want to expose every, every license plate out there that a lot of information are in that license plate that could be, uh, taken from any residents out there.
Councilman?
Just to preserve their privacy of that person. The act is.
Councilman, just, 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 just quickly, you know that that application is done and that, that they paid for that to be public, to be put under, so, there, it needs to be advertised that way because that is what, um, I'm sorry, Corporation Council, if you can intervene here. It is my understanding that it's, it's already a public document because you are paying for your license to be put this time, am I correct?
Yes, so it's a public application which is openable, also is the handicap sign is linked to that plate number, so that's why it has to be advertised that way.
Okay.
Very well, good. Roll call, Madam Clerk, on item number eleven for first reading.
Yes, Council President. Roll call on item number eleven for first reading. Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mims?
Yes.
Councilman Rivera? Councilman Rivera?
Yes.
Councilman Velez?
Yes.
Council President?
Yes.
Vote is six in favor, three absent. Item number eleven hereby adopted and first read.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk, item number twelve for first reading?
Item number twelve is an ordinance establishing handicap parking spaces at various locations on city roads. Nine three nine East Nineteenth Street on the east side, three forty-nine East Twenty-seventh Street on the east side, plate number A two zero K E Y, sixty-five Potomac Avenue on the east side, ten ninety-three East Twenty-second Street, east side, plate number five four three, L Z S, three forty-four Eastern Second Street on the west side, plate number V two four, K M E, six eighty-seven Eastern Six Street, east side, and three ninety-three Eastern Eight Street on the west side.
Move.
Move by Councilman Velez, second? We'll have a second? Do I have a second? Second by Councilman McCoy, uh, roll call, Madam Clerk, on item, second by Councilwoman McCoy and Councilwoman Mims. Roll call, Madam Clerk, on item number twelve for first reading.
Yes, Council President. Roll call on item number twelve for first reading. Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mims?
Yes.
Councilman Rivera?
Yes.
Councilman Velez? Council President?
Yes.
The vote is six in favor, three absent. Item number twelve is hereby adopted and first read.
Thank you very much.
Um, Council President, for items numbers nine through twelve will be held on, at the regular meeting on May twenty-sixth for second reading.
Thank you, thank you very much, uh, Madam Clerk. Okay, uh, at this time, we're going to take the non-consent agenda. Let's go with item number twenty-three. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Council President. Item number twenty-three is a resolution authorizing award of contract under competitive contracting to Professional Accounting Management LLC for the private collection of municipal court debt for the City of Patterson of the number twenty twenty dash two four, and that's, um, resolution twenty two five seven. It's done by administration.
Have a motion?
Move.
Move by Councilman Velez, do I have a second?
Second, discussion.
Second by Councilman Jackson and Councilwoman Mims. Councilman Jackson, discussion.
Thank you, Council President. So, um, coincidentally, I was just thinking, um, in regards to some of the items, uh, today regarding some of the reporting from the clerk and, and from the courts, uh, the statutory agency and its limitations, um, and I apologize because I'm sure we may have gone through this over, uh, in, um, in, uh, workshop, but I, I also want the public to be made aware. So, I would like for, if we can give, uh, entertain a brief moment for the administration for the VA to, um, give us some details in regard to some of the, uh, data collection that's going to be, uh, provided to the public now moving forward with this, uh, with this contract here.
Um, Councilman Jackson, I'm not exactly sure what you mean in terms of the data collection. This is a, um, collection of delinquent fees for the municipal court and this is something that's been in place. We actually sent around, after the, uh, workshop, we sent around a report that showed the collections that this, um, that the agency has done for the prior years. And so, it's something that at this point has been about, I think it was about a million dollars or so over the course of the last year in terms of delinquent of collectings on delinquent fees.
So, okay.
So, this is another, another year on that.
I understand relative to collecting fees, but moving forward, uh, I'm looking forward to seeing some more data driven. In fact, now that we have, we have the data officer, I would like to see a breakdown of where these fees are deriving, um, uh, I say coincidentally because I happened to see a documentary earlier today on how certain municipalities varies, not, not any, not Patterson, but twenty-five percent of the fee collection comes from the most disenfranchised community within those populations. So, I'm curious to see if, you know, um, we, we understand how the African-American community has been heavily impacted with COVID, um, there's been a gross negligence in relative to testing, and now I would like to see if there's, you know, through ticketing and through the, um, office of the municipal court, you know, is that, is the segment of the, of our population which is being, you know, um, um, you know, left out the most, are we being unfairly, um, targeted, uh, with the, um, ticketing as well? So, the only way that we can determine that to be a factor or non-factor is if we get the, the data. And since we have, you know, relative to this contract with the collection of fees and/or the, the data officer who's, who, who has come, who I haven't really, you know, begun to see what, what results is, is, is driven, I would like to be able to go back to the public to allow them to know and understand that these are the results of the Patterson Municipal Courts and how the, the revenue that's driven from the courts, how it breaks down relative to residents, non-residents, which segments and populations of our community and so on and so forth. So, if we can put something like that together, we'd definitely appreciate it.
Madam VA? Corporation Council?
Yeah, so, Councilman Jackson, I, I hear you and understand your point. What I'd like to do is work with you in getting those, that type of data for you and let's be specific about where the, where the fees would derive from, efficiently tickets, because I think, wh- while I do think there are issues and I, I agree with you, I think we need to categorize the tickets versus on whether or not they are city tickets, state tickets, or county tickets because that will make a difference. So, if you and I can have a conversation offline and kind of discuss the data you want, I'll work with you in getting that data.
Council President, very good, I appreciate it.
Hey, great. Councilman Velez?
Yeah, and adding to that, um, um, I know that before the, the collection, I also in that data, data, I would like to see if those type of tickets or whatever they got fined for, that you're going back to collection, if there's a warrant behind it, if there's a bench warrant behind it, because it's my understanding that when you felt paying something to court, the court more likely will put bench warrant on it and, uh, and, and till they don't get the pay, they will remove those bench warrant, uh, uh, to see why they went to collection, if they removed the bench warrant, things like that, because, uh, it's, it's good to know because I don't want a concession calling me and saying, hey, listen, I, I paid a ticket through collection, they arrest me because I had a bench warrant because that ticket. So, that's actually clear and also to see how much of that million dollar that the VA saying that it produced, we bring to the statutory, uh, committee, a report, how much do we go to the profits of the general budget and how much we go to state and municipal, uh, state and other, and that entity that is tied up to that, uh, uh, ticket or whatever fine is.
Okay, thank you very much. Roll call, Madam Clerk, on item number twenty-three for approval?
Roll call on item number twenty-three for approval. Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mims?
Yes.
Councilman Rivera?
Yes.
Councilman Velez?
Yes.
The votes are six in favor, three absent. Item number twenty-three is hereby adopted.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk, item number twenty-four?
Yes, Madam Clerk. Item number two point, a resolution of the Anthony Contract with Edmunds and Associates Inc. for hardware and system software management support services related to the MCSJ Software, Software System or the Division of Information Technology. That's Administration Resolution twenty two five eight.
Have a motion?
A more.
Move by Councilwoman Mims, you have a second?
Again.
By Councilman Jackson? Roll call, Madam Clerk, on item number twenty-four for approval?
Yes, Madam President. Roll call on item number twenty-four. Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mims?
Hi, right before our vote, uh, Madam VA, uh.
Councilwoman, you, you it yourself.
I'm sorry. Madam VA, just a request, a recommendation before our vote, can we look into phase out with our, um, admin system to ensure system interface so that when it comes to different departments within the city, that we can ensure that the systems interface and they can talk to a resident when I have to go from one department or to another location over the city, whether it's health department, uh, inspectors, uh, community development, we just understand what I'm saying, so, just check us the admins for phase out or system interface so that when people are coming to get information, there's a way that we can monitor that system, um, all over the city versus we have to go here and we don't have a way to upload it and just get some calls as it pertains to how the systems can interface. Uh, my vote is yes.
Councilman Rivera?
Yes.
Councilman Velez?
Uh, this is, uh, oh, okay, I, I, I can.
So, yes or no?
Uh, no, yeah, no, I just want, I was gonna, I was gonna, I'd gonna vote, but I just want to make sure because I mean, I don't know if you, Councilwoman President, have been receiving this email, oh, me, I look colleague about the bill with government paid it. I don't know if you received that email, so I had to refer every time they send me that email to Mrs. Long, I don't know if she received it because of the government paid the payment. Okay, good.
Yeah, this is different, yeah.
Okay, good, so my vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilman. Council President?
Yes.
The vote is six in favor. The vote is six in favor, three absent. Item number twenty-four is hereby adopted.
Hey, very good, Madam Clerk, item number twenty-five?
Yes, Councilwoman.
I'm sorry, one second, Madam V A?
I'm sorry, yes, and I know Orion Foot is on the line. He does just have one thing that is different on the resolution. I think he caught today that there is a, the wrong term. So we're requesting that we might be able to make an amendment on the floor. And I just didn't know if we needed to say that now before we voted on it and...
Wait a minute, you're talking about item number twenty-five?
Twenty-five, I think it's just an incorrect date to the term. The term should be May first, twenty-twenty, to April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one. And so we just wanted to note that so that you can make the change on the resolution.
Hold on.
Okay, so she can read twenty-five to the record with the amendment, right? Over to you. Okay.
What's the amendment, May first, twenty-twenty-two?
Madam V A?
To April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one.
It just says April thirtieth, twenty-twenty, instead of twenty-twenty-one. Okay, so that's the amendment, correct? Madam Clerk, can you please read twenty-five?
What was the item in the workshop? What was the item in the workshop?
Councilman, we, right now, it's on for approval with the correct dates.
I know, and this is the thing. I just, when they come and correct and meant something at we speak, I just want to compare something with the, with the one that I have here. What was the current workshop?
The number of the item?
In the workshop, yeah.
Um, I don't know, I don't have the workshop agenda in front of me.
Let me get it for you, just a moment.
Yeah, Madam Clerk, you don't need to get it. What he is, what he's asking for is if you're asking for the amendment. In, this is the reason for the amendment, Councilman Velez, because the, the, what was booked before us had the incorrect.
And I understand that, but if you listen to Madam V A, she just stated a month tomorrow is different on Mr. Fortis. She started with May, and he said it's April. So I want to make sure.
No, it's May to, May of this year. Hey, no, it's May of this year to April of next year. And the incorrect thing is that May of twenty-twenty to April of twenty-twenty, which doesn't make sense. It's May twenty-twenty to April of twenty-twenty-one. So it's just a clerical error, yeah.
Okay, so, so it will not change any amount of money, nothing like that, right?
Nothing, no, yeah.
Okay, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Council President.
Please read to the record, item twenty-five with the amendment.
Item twenty-five is amended. It's resolution authorizing the award of contract to Time Track Systems for hardware and software support services related to the Time Track System for the Division of Information Technology. It's from Administration, it's Resolution number twenty-two-five-nine. And there's an amendment in the fourth paragraph which says, now therefore be resolved by the Municipal Council of the City of Patterson that a contract for hardware and software support services related to the Time Track System for the Division of Information Technology be awarded to Time Track Systems, nine-three-three Pine Grove Avenue, Port Huron, Michigan, four-eight-zero-six-zero-three-one from May first, twenty-twenty, through April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one, in the total amount of twenty thousand, four hundred forty-eight dollars.
Have a motion?
Move.
Move by Councilman Velez, second by Councilwoman Mims. Roll call, Madam Clerk, on item twenty-five with the amendment.
Roll call on item number twenty-five amendment. Councilman Jackson? Councilman McCoy?
I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, it's future of a new, but yes.
Councilman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mims?
Yes.
Councilman Rivera?
Yes.
Councilman Velez?
Yes, Madam Clerk.
Council President?
Yes.
The vote is six in favor, three absent. Item number twenty-five is adopted as amended.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk, item twenty-six.
Yes, Council President. Item number twenty-six is resolution to purge taxes on block five-nine-zero-one, block thirty-one, also known as fifty-one Marshall Street, as a result of its qualification for a charter exemption as a house of worship. It's Finance Resolution number twenty-two-six-zero.
Move.
Move by Councilman Velez, second by Councilwoman Mims. Roll call, Madam Clerk, on item number twenty-six for approval.
Roll call on item number twenty-six for approval, Councilman Jackson?
Um, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk. Councilman Velez? Can you give me some details on what, which, how, so what this is exactly?
Uh, yes, top one is in the corner of Marshall and Grant. Is the Great Commission Church. What happened in this case, and I got, I believe the corporate counsel could elaborate a little bit, or March, is that the three property, it was a house of worship adjacent to the church. And it was used to the purpose of the church for many, many, many years. And when they changed the passive pass away, Reverend Mena, and they changed the papers to the new organization and they forgot to list that property into the exempt next to the church, that isn't the same property of the church for many, many years. And that's why, that's why it happened to worship.
My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mims?
For the great honor of Reverend Mena and to the Great Commission Church, my vote is yes.
Councilman Rivera?
Yes.
Councilman Velez?
Thank you to Administration and to Legal Department, and also March to move forward with this. It was lingering for a while since October last, two thousand nineteen. And finally, the church receives justice on this. So my, my vote is yes.
Council President?
Yes.
The votes are six in favor, three absent. Item number twenty-five is hereby adopted.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk, item number twenty-seven.
Item number twenty-seven, resolution to purge taxes erroneously charged to block three-one-one-one, at three-eight, also known as one-one-three through one-thirty-nine Fulton Street, Patterson, New Jersey. It's Finance Resolution twenty-two-six-one.
Move. Move by Councilwoman Mims, second by Councilman Velez. Roll call, Madam Clerk, on item number twenty-seven for approval.
Yes, Council President. Roll call on item number twenty-seven for approval, Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mims?
Yes.
Councilman Rivera?
Yes.
Councilman Velez?
Yes.
Council President?
Yes.
The votes are six in favor, three absent. Item number twenty-seven is hereby adopted.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk, item number twenty-eight.
Yes, Council President, item number twenty-eight is a resolution authorizing special item of revenue and appropriation twenty-twenty through twenty-twenty-one of the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, HIV Emergence Relief Program Grant, COVID-nineteen Response. It's a Finance Resolution number twenty-two-six-two.
Move.
Move.
Move by Councilman Velez, second by Councilwoman Mims. Roll call, Madam Clerk, on item number twenty-eight for approval.
Yes, Council President. Roll call on item number twenty-eight for approval, Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman McCoy? Councilman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mims?
Yes.
Councilman Rivera?
Yes.
Councilman Velez?
Yes.
Council President?
Yes.
The votes are six in favor, three absent. Item number twenty-eight is hereby adopted.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk, item number twenty-nine.
Yes, Council President. Item number twenty-nine is a resolution authorizing special item of revenue and appropriation twenty-twenty through twenty-twenty-one U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, HIV Emergence Relief Project Grant, Ryan White Program. It's a Finance Resolution twenty-two-six-three.
Move.
Move by Councilwoman Mims, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman McCoy, roll call, Madam Clerk, on item twenty-nine.
Yes, Council President. Roll call on item number twenty-nine for approval, Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mims?
Yes.
Councilman Rivera?
Yes.
Councilman Velez?
Yes, Madam Clerk.
Council President?
Yes.
The votes are six in favor, three absent. Item number twenty-nine is hereby adopted.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. I'm gonna hand the meeting to Councilman Jackson, I will be right back. Duty calls, duty calls.
Very good, Council President. Madam Clerk, next item, please, item number thirty?
Yes, Council President. Item number thirty is a resolution authorizing an award of contract to Millennium Strategies LLC for disaster recovery administrative services for the City of Patterson. RFP number twenty-twenty-dash-two-six is for Fire Department Resolution twenty-dash-two-six-four.
Very good. Uh, move by Councilwoman Mims, is there a second?
Can you, sorry, can you repeat the orders again?
It's a resolution, Councilman, it's a resolution authorizing an award of contract to Millennium Strategies LLC for disaster recovery administrative services for the City of Patterson. It says an RFP number twenty-twenty-dash-two-six, and it's a Fire Department Resolution twenty-two-six-four.
Move.
It was moved, it was moved by Councilwoman Mims, so was that Councilman Velez?
Yes.
Okay, second by Councilman Velez. I do notice we have Chief, Chief McDermott on the, on the meeting. Chief McDermott, you want to just give a quick detail, I know we talked briefly, the email in regard to some information that you have printed to this item?
Uh, sure, so this was an RFP for cost recovery services and advisory services for the cost recovery due to outlays for COVID for the City of Patterson. So what this will do is this will take all the myriad of different grants that are out there, and we'll have one person that not only advises us on how we can go, but also will give, will fill out the applications for same. With that, there was five, five submissions, five different companies. Myself and two others, Red Group graded, and came out with two that were close in score. It was High Parametrics and Millennium Strategies. We called them and gave them a, an interview to kind of, you know, ascertain, and, you know, get us so that we're certain which one we wanted. And we selected both in score and then in units and afterwards, the Millennium Strategies. At this point, you know, given the nature of COVID and the unpredictability at a long term, we'll make this contract open for one year. And it has a cap right now at sixty thousand dollars, which we felt was a reasonable amount. The, the cost of the, for the Millennium Strategies, the intention is for it to be covered within cost reimbursements, whether it's through CARES or FEMA, to cover that cost. And they'll, they'll buy all of these different grants together. And as mentioned at the, the last meeting, there's so many different grants that are out there, and we have to be careful in how we apply. And they're gonna help us advise, help me and help the city advise on how we apply for these different grants and give good guidance, as well as do the applications for us. So right now, you know, given where we are in this, this time, it's gonna help us out both with time, because we're dedicated to battling the COVID virus. And as that battle still continues, I mean, it is dynamic daily. But it will help us to, to really make sure, and I, I digress, to maximize the financial recovery for the City of Patterson to reduce the financial negative impact on the city. And that's really what they'll do, and, you know, we scored them fairly, and that was the one we felt would be the best.
All right, Chief, so, I, I feel very comfortable with you giving it, uh, to move forward. Just make sure you please forward the score sheet to all the council members, so we all have that to review, which, meaning the other companies that was in on the RFP process, as well as the grading system that you, your team came, went through to, to select this option.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Chief. Go call Madam Clerk on item thirty?
Council President, I've been, I've been asking for the floor.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Councilman, I didn't see you. You, you, Councilman Rivera?
Yes. So Chief, I know when this RFP was put together, you didn't know much about the funding that was gonna come from the county, right? And you mentioned the setting point before the previous meeting, the workshop, was FEMA application. So give me an example on this assess, on this pandemic that we have now. What type of funding will we apply for in FEMA or any other grant? Because right now, the county's allocating eight million dollars, over eight million dollars, eight-point-five. And it seems that that's the first go-around, right, eight-point-five?
Yes, but it's, it's not just where we're getting the money, it's what we're going to apply for, and I'll give you an example.
Give me an example, that's what I'm looking for.
So what I've been doing is I've been calculating, so when an ambulance goes out on one of the thousands of COVID calls that we've done, we track all of the time used by all firefighters, all fire captains, all staff, to calculate and, and track their time and time spent, as well as the usage of UVC lighting, as well as the use of, of germicide, the use of the tools, the mileage on the vehicles. And, you know, I want one central repository that can calculate this, tell us what's good, what's not. And, you know, we want to just maximize that benefit. And, you know, you know, part of it is, I know, we are, we're overextended. I mean, we're doing a ton of work that, that this will help us, that we don't miss anything too.
Chief, I, I understand, but the reason I'm asking the question is, I saw the RFP, right?
Yeah.
They would not be doing the billing. So it's just, it's just a simple question that I'm asking you. They're gonna be body auditing, right, what was billed?
Yeah.
Right, but, but the work still needs to be done by the city employees.
Yeah, we've done, we're doing a purchase out, we've done the billing.
And the billing, and the billing also, according to the RFP, the billing is gonna be done by the administration, and they're just gonna oversee that, that operation, I guess, that billing.
The billing to whom? Are you talking the billing to the county?
To the county, any, any grant that we obtain, the state of the county, and also the county. The administration is gonna have to do the billing, just like any other grant, right?
Um, well, we, when you say billing, they're gonna, we're gonna package.
You guys, you guys need to make expenditure reports. That's what I need to be billing, you guys need to make expenditure reports to the grantors.
Correct.
To be put together by the administration.
They made sure we're not duplicative in our submissions.
We also have to make sure.
The above board, making sure that what we're doing is, is totally responsible, ethical, and making sure that we're not doing anything that could put the city in a bind. And I'll, I'll go right back to Irene and Lee, that was a complete nightmare. This is gonna help us add that level of checks and balances, is going to help us with professionals, and their job is to do this. And, you know, I, I've done this a long time, and I could, I see what we're seeing.
Chief.
Go ahead.
I'm not saying that we shouldn't hire them, I'm just telling you, you guys could be prepared, the public could understand. Because what happened with Irene and those... Because what happened with Irene and those, and those disasters that we had previously, a company like this would not be able to stop it because the expense was already incurred. I don't think the administration's gonna be talking to them and say, listen, could we work overtime, or could we do this? Listen, I'm not saying there's not a need to hire them, I'm just entertaining the conversation, just like we, the other, we are the other vendor, uh, we could proceed at this time, uh, just so you know, Chief, we could proceed. I, I was just entertaining a conversation.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate that, I do.
All right.
Madam Clerk, I'm, I'm, I'm back.
Very good, Council President, roll call.
Okay, so we're in roll call?
No, no, we're about to go to roll call, we're just in a discussion.
Okay.
Should I proceed with roll call, Council President?
Roll call, Madam Clerk, on item number thirty.
Yes, Council President, roll call on item number thirty for approval, Councilman Abdalizis?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mims?
First, let me just say, I really miss Hacienda, but Chief McDermott, you, um, you have me every week, and I see your lighted tree in the background, so I really appreciate that. I really appreciate this item on the agenda, 'cause I'm very, um, adamant about things, strategic planning, uptake of active measures, and deliverable outcomes, I think that's what the item presents. I'm really happy to support it, and I look forward to a lot of grants being provided, and, um, us being, um, below the radar when it comes to all the dollars that will funnel through our community to ensure that our city, our city moves for, our vote is yes.
Councilman Rivera?
Um, I just wanna add that, you know, I, I feel comfortable in approving this, because at least, you know, I have to my due diligence to ask all the questions that I could ask of this administration, and they have done their part to tell me the reason why this new contract is needed. Uh, at this time, my vote is yes.
Councilman Velez?
Abstained.
Council President?
Yes.
The vote is six yeses, one abstention, and two absent. Item number thirty is hereby adopted.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk, item number thirty?
Yes, Council President, item number thirty is resolution authorizing rejection of bid and authorizing the solicitation of new bids for the maintenance of the Lou Costello Pool and the Riverside Veterans Pool, is bid number twenty-one eight for the Department of Public Works.
Oh, there, Council President, this is number thirty-one, not thirty.
I said thirty-one. Thirty was what we just voted on.
Yeah, but she, she said I'm reading item thirty, this is thirty-one that we're going to vote on.
Okay, so I guess she said the number wrong, but she did read the correct item, okay.
And, and, and just.
This is item number thirty-one, so it was moved by? We have a discussion that needs to be moved, move by Councilwoman Mims, who seconded it?
Council President, I wanna second it, but I just wanna remind you that in workshop, it's supposed to be only Lou Costello in the contract, not before Red, uh, Pool, because they said we're gonna remove it. So, she, she reading the, the title as including, including, uh, Riverside and, and Costello, and I recall that they didn't move forward because of Costello, not Riverside.
Okay, so, Madam B A?
Yes, the issue is, is that the original bid, the one that we are rejecting, was for both. So that's why it says that there right now, but we are going to be going out to bid, um, the solicitation of new bids is just for Lou Costello.
Okay, very well, understood, okay. So it was moved by Councilwoman Mims, and it was seconded by Councilman Velez. Roll call, Madam Clerk, on item thirty-one?
Yes, Council President, roll call on item number thirty-one, Councilman Abdalizis?
Yes.
And Jackson?
Yes, um, thank you, Madam Clerk, Council President, my, my only concern with, with this, and I do understand the rationale, I saw the Director Rodriguez on, on their, um, on the, uh, meeting. If, and I understand based on the, the conditions of COVID, we're talking about reducing the possibility of not having, um, uh, uh, both who's working. But, um, it's, it's my concern that, with, with that being said, and, and if the, the, in fact, we're talking about moving towards opening up the government within the next thirty days or so, we may wind up late in summer, and because we only have one pool open, it may be an overwhelming amount of people you're trying to utilize the one pool. So, if in fact we're going to open any pools because of, uh, uh, and, and only, I mean, one, I think the more pools we have open will be much more beneficial, considering COVID. Um, we would overcrowding at one location. So, I don't think concerns item and, and, um, not going out for bid, or at least pay some, I mean, if we're gonna open one item, it's my opinion that we should be opening both. Um, it's bad enough, we, we have, you know, our children have, have been confined and locked in tight spaces at home over the past several months, and if in fact, things do, um, get under control, I think that we should be able to provide these outlets for them over the summer, so, I can't support this item, Madam President, and I don't know if, if, if you, um, if you understand my concern, but my vote is no.
Councilman McCoy?
I think the, the, um, the issue was around pricing and funding, if I recall. Um, so we need to make sure that we have the funding to support, um, the initiative. Um, my vote is yes to reject all bids.
Councilwoman Mims?
Um, before I vote, I just wanna say, I think this, um, uh, rejection of bids, but I think once we go into the bid process, uh, we definitely need the repair in Crystal Park, I believe this is I believe this is where there's a crack in the bottom, um, and we've been sewing it, so I'm looking forward, I know they're rejecting it, but I'm looking forward to that repair. Uh, we've had a lot of concerns there, and we definitely need to make sure that it's, uh, and proper repair for the residents, my vote is yes.
Councilman Rivera?
I pass, uh, the best.
Councilman Velez?
Yeah, I recalled the whole conversation, uh, regarding the, uh, in the bid and going with one pool only, and even I, I believe that Director stated that it was possible not open any pools at this season, but they had to get it ready for next season, so I recalled that conversation, so my vote is yes.
Councilman Rivera?
I was, I was trying to recall the, the discussion we had this time, and correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong, um, Director, so the reason we're doing this is because in that, in that previous bid, you also had maintenance involved, correct?
Yes.
And you felt, and it makes sense, you felt that if we don't open the, if we don't open the pools, then there was no maintenance required, were we still obligated to make the payment, the maintenance?
No, there's no, uh, if they're not doing the booting, no. The reason that we, we, we rejected and we want to do it, like I said before, um, on a weekly basis, the this contract here that we're rejecting is overall maintenance, we wanna put it on a more itemized, uh, schedule, so that we know, um, if we only open up for three weeks, we only have paid for three weeks, if we open up for two weeks?
No, I, I get it, but, but the way it's written up right now, the bid?
There was no way of, of, of controlling that.
There's no way, so you don't know when they go do maintenance on the pool?
Yeah, there was no pricing, uh, there was no daily pricing, weekly pricing, in.
All right. All right, my vote is yes.
Council President?
Yes.
Votes are six yeses, one no, and two absent. Item number thirty-one is hereby adopted.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk, item number thirty-two?
Yes, Council President, item number thirty-two is a resolution authorizing award of contract W E Timberman Company, Inc., for the purchase and delivery of an export pothole truck for the Department of Public Works under the Houston-Gabiston Area Council Contract Number S M ten dash one eight eight, it's Public Works Resolution Number twenty-two-six-six.
Moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Velez, seconded by Councilwoman Mims. Roll call, Madam Clerk, on item number thirty-two for approval.
Council President, roll call on item number thirty-two for approval, Councilman Abdalizis?
So, I know the sixth ward, we've been repaving roads in record numbers throughout the years, but we still have to maintain the roads in the sixth ward, and I'm glad that the Director, DPW, and the administration are purchasing a pothole truck, because we do have to maintain the roads that we gotta get to in the sixth ward and throughout the city. Um, this is something the city of our size, uh, needs more than one pothole truck, it needs more than two pothole trucks, because we do need to maintain our roads, and this is a step in the right direction. So, my vote is yes, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Clerk, uh, may I set myself up there, here we go. Extremely excited for my Councilman of the sixth ward and lady, that he's able to get, um, the Rockland Road's now paved. You know, us people in the first ward, we still need to patch the roads there, we're unable to, to see it paved. So, this is a desperate need for us, to make a luxury for others. In the first, I mean, you know, we'll take these, uh, these hand-me-downs and sweep it up. And, and be like the other wards on the other side of the spectrum. Um, so my vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman McCoy?
I'm, I'm glad to see that, um, in all that is going on, we can still maintain a sense of humor.
Yeah, yeah.
All be it based in some reality and some truth. But this has been in, in the works for a long time. We know that the DPW is a hard-working department, um, but they also needed the tools to get the job done. And that we have, um, this is going to be real critical to, uh, patching those cracks and small, um, cracks in the roadway, to make sure it lasts longer and it's, and it's well maintained. So, uh, we probably need another one, so we wanna look at the budget going forward, that we give them the tools they need, so I support this move, I think it's, uh, it's great, and glad to have it, my vote is yes.
Councilwoman Mims?
I wanna commend the DPW department, I'm working with the one, uh, pothole repair truck, it looked like the same friend and son's truck, uh, who was leaning to sides and, um, probably by strings at some moments, but they still worked and, and did the best they could for the city, so I wanna commend them for their due diligence and working without having the proper equipment. And I'm grateful that now as a council, they can come forward to ensure that they get the equipment to get the job done, so my vote is yes.
Rivera? Councilman Velez?
Yes.
Councilman Velez?
Uh, I just wanna make sure that you took the vote from, uh, my colleague, uh. Uh, first of all, you know, when you go to think about history of DPW, we had to go way, way back, and I know you guys could remember this name, and also Billy. It was a person in DPW ensured all employees be well-treated and also equipped. Um, it was, uh, our friend, Keeper George. Uh, and she, she always mentioning about this type of truck that DPW needed. So, uh, and her memory, uh, finally is here, and, uh, I wish we could honor it, as we honor also fire trucks around, to the people that really work hard, uh, to give this, this, uh, uh, a footfall for this agenda of DPW. Also, I wanna commend, uh, uh, my colleague, Flavio Rivera, and also McCoy, because they put hard in this capital budget that they always requested from DPW. And without that, uh, our agenda in the committee, uh, that comes from DPW cannot be moved forward. So every year, uh, and I'm not saying since I'm being a council, every year that everybody is assigned a committee, we work hard to make sure that, uh, everything that comes to our committee is being heard by the administration. So, saying that, uh, my vote is yes.
Council President?
Yes.
Votes are seven in favor, two absent, item number thirty-two is hereby adopted.
Thank you very much, uh, Madam Clerk, this time we're opening the public portion?
Yes, Council President? Roll call to open the public portion?
No, we don't need a roll call, I'm opening, I, I need you to, um, just announce the number for anyone that the public portion is now open.
Okay, I will. The public portion, the number to call for public portion is nine-seven-three and five-seven-nine, the meeting ID number is seven-one-one-six-eight-zero-zero-zero-seven-one. Again, it's nine-seven-three, three-two-one, one-five-seven-nine, and the ID number is seven-one-one-six-eight-zero-zero-zero-seven-one.
Thank you, we'll give.
There is one speaker so far for the public portion.
Okay, very good, um, all right, so, can you see, um?
Our speaker?
Okay. A cou- just give us a couple minutes, Council President, the speaker is Ms. Wahida Mohammed.
Very well.
Hello?
Madam Clerk?
Yes, Council President?
Hello?
Is the speaker on?
Yes, she's on now, go ahead.
Yes.
We can hear you.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. I just wanna, I just wanna ask two questions, and I really, really need an answer. Please tell me that we have finally been able to get death tolls for the different wards. That's number one, and number two, am I the only one that looked down Broadway or Martin Luther King Way and see it still looks a mess? And when is that gonna be fixed?
Thank you, Ms. Mohammed, are you done? Ms. Mohammed, are you done?
Yes.
Okay, Madam B A?
Yes.
Um, our speaker, um, has asked two questions, of which we, the council, have asked for numbers, uh, so, uh, if you could please address both questions?
Sure, um, I do know that the, the death tolls that we present, um, uh, again, I think Dr. Ball has spoken to this topic, that we don't always have all the death tolls in real time, even the ones that we get, um, that sometimes the, there's delay with the information from hospitals or from the medical examiner. Um, and the public health officer has continued to say that, um, the address issue is, um, is one that in, in terms of giving out the addresses to identify by board, that he still feels like it's a, a reach. the addresses to identify by board, that he still feels like it's a breach of the HIPAA violations. We are working through this. We're actually working, our Innovation Officer is working alongside, um, some researchers from Rutgers. So, that we're trying to do it the right way. I do understand that other communities, um, have different ways of sharing their information. Our Public Health Officer, um, is going to be working with this Rutgers, these Rutgers colleagues to try to address this and to talk about ways, um, about HIPAA. Uh, the Broadway issue, I think it's a question of street sweeping. Is, is that in terms of saying that it's a mess? I'm guessing that's what Ms. Mohammed was, was meaning. And we do have street cleaning in effect, but we are not ticketing.
Oh, no, Council, not, not in that sense.
Councilman Vellis, let, let her finish because I, we know that what she's addressing is the amount of people that are out there and, you know.
Okay. So, I wasn't sure if it was the people or, or the trash. So, um, the street sweeping, that issue, we are, we do have challenges because the, um, we're not giving tickets because a lot, because everybody's home during the day. It's harder to clean the streets when the streets are on, but there's also not many places for people to park. Um, but with regard to a lot of the challenges with people not social distancing, um, we do have our COVID units out doing their best, addressing concerns at all hours of the day and night. Um, and, and really encouraging the public that this, you know, this is still a pandemic. This is still a, a tragic situation and people can still spread the virus. This, this is not going away. Um, and so, we, I, I do know that Director Shizial and Chief Decora, um, and, and is their entire force are really working and giving out T-Cops. They're giving out, um, violations of executive order by Governor Murphy. And they report on it every day and, um, that they will continue to do so. And we hope that people, you know, are, start getting the message that, again, this is not a, a reopening. We cannot go back to what we were like before this and just having people standing outside, um, standing in groups and acting like the, the virus has gone away.
So, so Madam BA, why, why if we know and we see this, because if, I, I know you see, if you're out there, you know, why don't we put special attention, you know, with our COVID units in that area?
And I do think that there, they, there is special attention paid, paid to certain areas and Broadway is one of them. And, uh, a- again, Director Shizial reports on this. They, they're there almost every day at different, multiple times a day. Um, so, so that is something that, um, we are aware of and, you know, people are, continue to, uh, congregate in ways that they shouldn't be.
Council President?
Councilman Jackson?
So, this is, uh, partly the reason why I asked for some of the data from earlier. I'm extremely. Although I'm extremely.
Who, who's speaking?
Probably the next caller. Although I'm extremely comfortable with, uh, with, uh, Director Shizial as well as Chief, uh, Mike Decora, uh, in relative to their, um, their equal concern and treatment to the community, I still think there's a huge necessity. We've seen around this country examples of, uh, different, differential in treatment from certain residents where, right here in New York City, um, members of the African-American community were taken and beaten. And, and fortunately, we haven't seen that. But I do would like, I would like to know, um, when, when the BA is referencing, you know, T-Cops and tickets and summonses that are being issued, um, we should know what, what segment of the community that's from. Furthermore, um, relative to the, the, uh, uh, the past, uh, consideration or non-concentration of letting us know exactly what in, what parts of our community has been impacted most, I would like to get a legal, not, not, not only a legal opinion, but I need to see, and, you know, Corporation Council, forgive me, you know, I'm always one of the people that I wanna know why exactly. I wanna see the, the portion, a segment of the law, of the HIPAA law that is restricting for these days to be here. You know, I think that, you know, I think, you know, the members of the community are entitled to know how their neighborhoods are being impacted. And lastly, you know, yeah, Madam BA, I, I mean, there may be, because I think, uh, uh, Senator Poe received, you know, a, a lot of grief from me as well at different times. And, you know, I try to be as fair and equal and level as possible. But it's rather concerning to me that when a caller in the community calls up, specifically relative to Broadway or any street within the, within the community, that you're so far off base that you have no idea that what they're talking about. No, no one in, no one who knows the city, the city considered that anyone is talking about street cleaning on Broadway. Because in fact, most of those areas from Broadway before Cow Street on down in front of the library, where, where most of these issues are occurring, there's no parking there anyway. There's no parking in front of the library or adjacent across the street. The, the, the following block, there's very few vehicles that park there. But what is relative is the amount of individuals that's sleeping on the library stairs that's, uh, defecating, leaving feces on the, on the library properties that are overly, you know, congregating and, um, and, uh, you know, just providing an area of discomfort and/or unattractiveness to the students. And to be the BA and not have an understanding of what the community's concerns are is very, very concerning to me. It's very alarming. I don't think when anyone who lives in this area would have thought that the young lady was talking about street cleaning.
No, Councilman Jackson, I think to add, one second, to add to that, you know, um, it, it is also concerning to me, you know, that no one mentions, and, and, and Madam BA, you keep mentioning addresses. Nobody's asking for anyone to break the law by giving someone's address. We're talking about specifically numbers, numbers. You can say First Ward, a hundred, you know, Second Ward, twenty, Third Ward. You know, I don't understand why we can't do that, but other municipalities are doing it. So, you know, so HIPAA rules go with one municipality and not with the other. So, that's really alarming and, and confusing to me since it's been something that for weeks we've been asking.
I see, so.
And the other, one second, the other, the other thing is also, you know, I, I do know that there's concerns also in terms of the, uh, pavement, uh, in, on Broadway, because I think that's another thing that, uh, she touched upon, okay? Um, before you speak, Councilman Jackson, because, I mean, Councilman Vellis, please be mindful that we are on the public portion. So, one second. Madam Clerk, do we have another speaker?
No, Council President, no one else is calling.
Okay, um, Madam BA, I know that you, you were going to say something?
Right. I, I was just gonna note that, that, uh, Ms. Wahida Mohammed's exact phrase was "a mess", and so, I, I was just sort of utilizing that as something that a lot of times when we get complaints about, uh, street cleaning or trash, that's also the phrase that's used. So, you know, I, I was just going off of that, but I'm glad we were able to clarify.
Okay, very good. Um, at this time, I echo a motion to close the public portion.
Uh, no motion because I was gonna speak. Oh, yeah, move.
Why are we speak?
Yeah, okay, move, 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 okay.
Move, move to close the public portion by Councilman Vellis. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Jackson. Roll call Madam Clerk to close the public portion of the regular meeting.
Yes, Council President. Roll call to close the public portion of the co- um, public meeting is Councilman Abdaliziz. Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mims?
Yes.
Councilman Rivera?
Yes.
Councilman Vellis?
Uh, y- yes, yes.
Council President?
Yes.
The votes are seven in favor, two absent. The public portion is hereby closed.
Thank you very much. Councilmembers, uh, we are done with our journey and our proportion. Uh, at this time, I'm gonna entertain a motion to close the regular meeting. At that time, you can, unless there is any special new business.
Uh, no, I just wanna, I just wanna add, just in case each of you don't forget, I just, because I wanna do my closing of my thing. Uh, my, my, uh, other municipality, it even put in the zip code. They didn't even put in the, the, the ward at Newark, saying, zip code zero zero something is, is a red zone in Newark. And, and, and they put it by zip code to tag up the residents of Newark. And, and they just put it like that, North Ward or South Ward. And, and they don't, they don't give information about, uh, anybody in particular of, of, of the COVID-nineteen epidemic by itself. I just wanna say that.
Very good. Um, there is something else actually, councilmembers. It almost left me and I'd like to inform all of you, um. These times in the community, you know, we, we get, you know, the comments. Um, I don't do the social media chatter a lot. Um, I don't entertain stuff like that. Um, but I want the community to understand that when we, the council, you feel that we're pushing back is, uh, in terms of the mayor, when he and his administration, uh, when there's a pushback, it's, it's because we're not being informed. And I can tell you that I've been on the administration and specifically the mayor. I put it on record, the last meeting we had, the mayor has yet to contact me to have any discussion about COVID. Um, so for me to see a flyer, um, that says that we're opening up new sites and that we were starting tomorrow, May fifteenth, uh, was a little shocking to me because, um, he didn't recount. Um, but I will say that his chief of stats did. Um, unfortunately, what we found out today in our finance meeting is that, um, and, and if you can help me, uh, Councilman, um, Rivera, is that, um, Corporation Council, let us know. Go ahead.
No, no, if you want me, if, if you, if you recall the discussion, I could, uh.
No, 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 I recall the discussion. I do recall the discussion. I just wanted to let all the councilmembers know that, um, the administration did not come to us to discuss these sites. And these sites will need certain approvals. And, um, so I just wanted to let it be known, okay? And, and I, and I appreciate that Corporation Council did share with us the information in finance in terms of, I believe it was the insurance. So, President?
Yes, Council President. So, what I shared in finance was, Councilman Rivera asked why there was no resolution from the council to approve an agreement to pay, um, I think testing. So, my position is that without me having the proper insurances and whole pharmacy agreements, I can't put it before council because it's not complete. So, until I get those documents, I can't put an agreement from council to approve reimbursement for testing.
And then my conversation, I'll, 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 I'll let you speak in a minute. And my conversation was that this is the stuff that we've been asking for, for weeks. We've been asking for test site, um, testing for our seniors. So, I get it. We're here now, but yet this discussion wasn't had with us, okay? And again, when we get the phone calls, you know, um, councilmembers and our Councilman Vellis was the person who posted it first. That's how I found out about it.
Well, let me clarify.
I'm gonna let you speak. I'm gonna let you speak. So, I just wanted, just for the community to understand this is not that we don't wanna work with the administration. We're not getting the information in a timely fashion. The Facebook lives are going first, okay? Uh, the, the press conferences are being held, okay? But all our eyes are not dotted and all our Ts are not crossed. Councilman Rivera?
Uh, let, let me just be clear that the, the way it came out, Council President, is that we're questioning how come we would not contact it? The extent of the conversation, that's not how we initiated. I read an article in the newspaper where, and you could correct me if I'm wrong, uh, Madam BA, this, this had a discussion on one. I read an article where our BA basically was quoted stating that receipts were gonna be collected from the two existing testing sites that the mayor basically advertised, announced with, with those doctors. And I told Madam BA that in an effort to try to stay away from the media, uh, we need to actually have a contract. We gotta look at the legality of paying those doctors. Right now, we don't have any legal basis to pay them. So, by you collecting receipts and submitting it for payment, we cannot approve it because we don't have a contract with those two doctors, right? Right, Madam BA? That's, that's the discussion that we had. Um, and basically, what, the reason I brought this up is, we just started moving and if you need to enter into an agreement, you present it to the council and then we do it the right way because we also, and we have to stay under the law. Now, that's how we started discussing the portal opening of the testing site and the legality aspect of it. Because I was anticipating that we will have a resolution today approving a contract with the entity that will be, you know, providing the exams. We need a, we need an agreement, a contract between, you know, us and them. And I'm not even sure if we also need another agreement with the portal bed, but that we could work out at any given time, I guess. And that's when the conversation, and we were provided with the following information, that the record will have a resolution today because, is because the company that will be administering the exam tomorrow have not provided all the insurance documentation that is needed. So, now I'm questioning, um, Madam BA and, and Corporation Council. And tell them to provide this by tomorrow, for example. I just don't see how they could start. If you could put us in a liability, right? But then starting, first of all, you haven't gotten approval from the council. So, we don't have any legal basis for them to work on our behalf. That's one, right? And you could jump in anytime, um, uh, Corporation Council. Right now, they don't have any authority to work on our behalf because we haven't approved it. That's one. And you know what? You know the rest. I'm not gonna prolong it. You know, they can't get paid because for services, although, you, you know, if anybody that provides a service for us, we have a legal obligation to pay them. But also the law also states that you need to have a contract with the, with the council. We, we, with the city, I mean, not the council. We need to approve, uh, any of those agreements. So, I just wanted to bring it up to you because I don't wanna, you know, this could turn into something bigger.
And, and listen, at the end of the day.
End of the conversation. That was the extent.
Yeah, and actually.
It wasn't, it wasn't about the mayor, uh, Madam President. It wasn't about the mayor.
For me, it was about the mayor.
Okay, but, but we all, you know, we all as a body were one. But the bottom line is that we needed this testing site. I didn't take offense this time around that he didn't contact us because this has been going on for a while, but hopefully things change going forward, right? And things have not improved by criticizing publicly. Only does exclude more hostility in the community. You know, I'm just gonna, next time, instead of ripping him publicly, I'm just gonna grab him and say, "Listen, when can we start, you know, working together?" And I'm sure he's gonna react and we're gonna start working together, being informed. Because the only ones being hurt is the community by not working together. Now, putting that aside, tomorrow's initiative is a good thing for the community. The only problem I have is execution. It's being done illegally, illegal now. And it looks bad for us to try to block it because it's needed. But the legality aspect is it cannot, it cannot open though. The city needs it, but if you think about it, it should not open because there's a lot of liability involved if you think about it.
Okay, so, okay, wait, wait, wait. Okay. Councilman Vellis and then Councilman Jackson?
Yeah, I just wanna, you know, not, not to, uh, delive this, uh, this conversation more than it is, so, send it. But this is, this is facts, okay? Um, about ten o'clock at night on Tuesday, I was driving to downtown and I see this media, uh, vehicle inside Eastside High School. So, while this son is doing the Eastside High School, so I drove in. I asked him, "Sir, is anything, why are you here in this papakala?" He said, "Because there's gonna be a testing site on Friday." And I asked him, "Who?" So, he said, "The mayor." So, I grabbed the phone. I called the mayor. "Mayor, how come you haven't talked about the testing site at Eastside High School?" He sent me a flyer and then he said that he sent us a email. Email, and I, and the email was sent to all councilmembers by Jessica Diaz on Tuesday at three fifteen PM. And I have the email here. Now, while I, it's my understanding, and you could, you guys correct me, Administration, I understand that this is initiative of the Board of Education due to, uh, Dr. Litzin, Honor Memory and the team with the city, uh, to do it. And also, in the memorandum says, in the email that they sent us, that the City Council is sponsoring also at the, at the email of the press conference. So, what I did is, after I spoke to the news cast over there to see why they there, I called the mayor, the mayor qualified that is there, and I invited me twice. and I invited me twice to, I invited myself to the press conference. So I got there at 11 o'clock, nobody was there. So nobody, I didn't receive an invitation directly, but I followed the press conference memorandum that they gave us. Because when they say who, and I see the names of the mayor, I see Lee Chaffer, the lab that is going to give the test.
All right.
And say, city council, so I invited myself because I have more flexible time to do it probably I was there. So it was a special treatment on it. Matter of fact, I saw it as a beneficial because the Spanish media was informed in Spanish for be able to arrest him in Paterson.
So let's not, one second. I really, we're getting off of, that's not what this conversation is about, all right? Who got it first, who got it second, whatever. We didn't get it in the fashion we should have. And something like this that we've been requesting, okay? We held a convened a Board of Health meeting where we were requesting this. Someone was almost gonna speak to us and we said no, you know, because we didn't want to taint the process because this is something that we've been asking for the community. Okay, so at this point right now, what is in question right now is this. We have not entered into agreement, so there's no document between us, the city, okay? And the entity that's going to be doing this. We don't have any insurance information. So should we be opening? That's a liability issue here, all right? So before I let you speak, Madam Chief of Staff, you know, I think this question goes, it's a legal matter, if anything, at this point. Corporation Council, I'm going to let you speak, Councilman Jackson.
Do you have Councilman Jackson speak first or do you want me? I'm sorry.
Councilman Jackson. Councilman Jackson.
Thank you, Council President. So, you know, I, as well as you, Council President, respectfully, sees the matter of the mayor because it's rather very irresponsible. And as again, you know, Councilman Velez, which is very disheartening, you know, I never, I see news trucks around the city, I'll ride right past them. I'm not interested in who's getting an email or being on a press conference or who's getting credit. The real job that we are entitled or actually burdened with is the ensuring the safety of the public. Now, one of the concerns that I have is we have yet to have a discussion around the fact of specifications, of qualifications. What qualifications does this company render that's going to allow us to feel comfortable with it rendering services throughout the community? As you said, Council President, we implemented the newly formed or newly seating Board of Health. None of this was brought before us for discussion. We brought forward a very reputable company who is rendering services for the largest two municipalities in the state, as well as moving on Trenton, as well as Camden, as well as Philadelphia.
Can I pause you for a minute? Councilman, can I pause you for a minute? Only because I see, as you're speaking, I see the Chief of Staff. But I just need you to understand, Madam Chief of Staff, we don't have the info, so we know nothing. So I'm gonna pause you for a minute, Councilman Jackson, and I'm gonna let Madam Chief of Staff speak.
Well, wait, Councilman Jackson, I just want to say to you, first of all, thank you. Because it was you who brought this company that we're using to the table. It is the Sunrise Corp Company that you wanted to speak the day of the Board of Health. The day of the Board of Health meeting that you guys called. I diligently went and followed the process of that particular company because of what you said. And what you said was absolutely true. They were reputable in other cities. They are in Newark, they're in East Orange, they're in Irvington, and they're also going to Trenton. If I'm not mistaken, they're actually finalizing Trenton.
They're in Jersey.
In Jersey, uh huh. And that is why I went before our team and we did the research on them and that's why we brought them in. Because we knew that they were able to, one, provide us with the services that we needed. They were able to do it in multiple locations because I felt it was very important, along with the team, that we not only service one area, but we try to be in most corners of the city so that all the residents of Paterson would have that opportunity to be tested. So this is the company that is coming in. So the reason I waved my hand because I wanted you to know that, that that was the company. It was not another company, but it was the one that we brought to the table on that particular meeting with the Board of Health.
So, so Madam Chief of Staff, so that meeting happened over two weeks ago. So my whole point of this is, is the lack of communication. Because if all this was being put, this is what we want to know. We want to be informed so that way, and right now, this moving forward, there's still not a contract. There is something that needs to come before us that we have to approve. How are we starting this site without that?
Okay, Madam President, here is what I, I just need to know if it's a go or if we need to pull so that we can make the phone calls tonight to pull it.
It's nothing to pull.
One second, I was under the impression. Okay, I'll stop, I don't know if someone's speaking, I'll just go.
No, no, so let me, so let's just say this. I think because, I don't know how much of advertisement you guys have done. I mean, I advertised, I chopped the mayor's head off because I thought it wasn't about the mayor, it was about the content, right? The information, but not knowing, okay, you know, what was going to be providing the services. I honestly, you know, so if it's been advertised now as tomorrow is the first day, I've had people contact me that they're going to Kennedy tomorrow. So, you know.
Eastside, Eastside.
No, I think the gentleman, no, Eastside is tomorrow, yeah.
No, Eastside, Kennedy, School 28 and School 18 is tomorrow. All four sides are opening up tomorrow.
Okay, Councilwoman Rivera.
You let Councilwoman, she's go first and then I go up there.
Okay, Councilwoman Velez.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rivera, Council President. So I try to be the voice of reason here and I look at what has been said. And to the administration, it looks like your attentions are well intended. But sometimes we get a knee-jerk reaction. So you know, it's like when I see my nephew or something that gets really excited and does something, and they're like, whoa, our, and then we gotta get there. Madam Chief of Staff, there's no pulling here, there's no pulling. The word is out there. I sent that flyer out to thousands of people in the six ward. I emailed that on my list. That will be embarrassing to the city, one. And two, most importantly, that will be a disservice to our residents. What I recommend, Council President, whatever things we got, whatever i's we have to dot or whatever t's we have to cross, we get that ASAP, Corporation Council. We convene first thing tomorrow morning or whatever we need to do. We gotta come in, get five council members via WebEx, approve the necessary documents that we have to approve to make sure that the city is not held liable like Corporation Council stated. But this is out there. And worst case scenario, if we can't dot our i's or cross our t's, Madam BA, this is on the administration. You guys went out there and announced it. We are here to, ready to approve it. And then we'll discuss how do we fix it in the future. But to go and say, hey, let's pull this, no, there's people that need to be tested and there's people that are happy. That's why, am I upset at the way sometimes we're left out or how the process? Yeah, I get upset sometimes, but at the end of the day, I look at the bigger picture. This is testing, right? We want to get testing done. I think the consensus amongst the council and amongst everyone is, yeah, let's get the people tested. We can put our egos aside and figure out how we could figure, fix up and tighten up the procedures. But my recommendation, Council President, Corporation Council, this thing has been out there. The mayor's press conference, I saw the mayor and Councilman Velez speaking. There was like 30 microphones on that podium. There was a lot of microphones there, so it's out there. Let's not have what we had at Bonner Hospital and everyone being upset. So please, I hope your, the administration, I hope you guys are ready for tomorrow. We don't want to be receiving calls that they're open late, their lines are not ready, because this is what happened. You guys are hopefully playing properly. That's not the council's job to set up the sites and have everything in procedure and ready to go. So my recommendation, Council President, let's dot our i's, cross our t's. If you need us in an emergency meeting, please let us know.
So I think at this point, Corporation Council, I'm going to let you speak, Councilman, one second. Corporation Council, can you get this information that was missing that you needed?
So actually, I, from what I just got, it's a text message. From what I understand, Chief McDermott does have the information. I can get the information tonight, we can drop the contract tonight. It's not a big deal, I can get it done. The council also can ratify an emergency contract after the contract is introduced. So that we can do, you can do that the next calendar. Okay, next time we have to convene tomorrow morning.
Okay, Councilman Rivera.
See, but this is not the way we do business. And Councilman Adelis, I agree with you 100%. But I didn't see one council member suggest to pull it. That was a question asked by, by the Chief of Staff.
Yeah, you're right, I just want to make sure.
I just don't want to see the public, you know, saying, oh, the council was contemplating. No, the council was never contemplating on pulling it. What I'm saying is this, when are we going to learn? I want to ask the administration and our colleagues, when are we going to do things proper? When are we going to do our due diligence and get things done the right way? This is not, when I go out all the time and say the things that I say, it's not to show up the mayor, it's not to make him look bad, it's to hopefully get him to change and let's do the things the right way. If this thing was communicated with us, right, in a discussion, and for example, if the finance meeting would have been on Monday, but our finance meeting is usually the day of the meeting, I wouldn't ask those questions on Monday to the administration because of the comment that Madam BA passed regarding the other two entities. Now, my question to Madam BA is, have you given the directive to those two entities, right, to start not charging people that are getting text, you know, getting done the exam? Not charging the ones that don't have insurance and they will send us the bill? I'm just trying to help, not to make you look bad, but if you did, then there's two other contracts that we're going to have to address. I just want to do things the right way. And that's why I'm bringing this, this is such, is not to show up the mayor. Now, if I didn't bring this up in finance, things would have been all over the newspapers because it's illegal. We're talking about legality. Councilmember Velez, I understand your point. This is needed, but process needs to be followed. The same way the federal government needs to follow a process. If this up to the Democrats right now, we'll be getting the $2,000, right? We no question asked from anybody, but it has to go through a process, right? Congress, Senate, President, right? Now, here, there's also a process, a legality. I wish we could do whatever we want with the money we have right now in our coffers. I wish we could give everybody in Paterson money and say, you know, do what we want with the money, but we have laws. And that's why we got Corporation Council here. We're going to address the issue, but I don't want to get into the habit of always doing this. Oh, always being reactive. Oh, we doing it, oh, we forgot to do it, let's do it now. No, we gotta do it before it takes place. But again, the intent was never to pull it, it's just to make it right and stay under the law. That was it.
Okay, can I say something, Council President?
Madam Chief of Staff.
Yes, I want to go back to Councilman Al's response about being ready. As you can see, I never come on camera like this. I just left the sites, checking them because they're all being set up now. I only came back because I needed to make sure I was here if there was something I needed to be asked on this part. The sites are already set up. That started around 3 o'clock today. I will be at the sites around 7 o'clock in the morning to make sure that they're followed up with the rest of the staff and the staff that's, when I say the rest of the staff, I'm talking about the staff of the particular company that's there. Just making sure, again, to assure you that these sites will be open, on time, everything will be in place so that we can start at 9 o'clock. I do apologize for anything that may have been offset on my end. But I've been working very diligently the last couple of days, trying to make sure. And again, I don't, I'm not looking for any passes or any of that. I am excited tomorrow that we are going to be testing people with a company that, to me, knows what they're doing. And I say that very proudly. Again, Councilman Jackson, I do want to thank you. And I want to do that publicly. Just because that process did not happen the day of, it was not taken off the table. And it was vetted, far as, when I say vetted, I mean, it was vetted far as us going to other municipalities, seeing how the process was going with them. And again, thank you. And I don't want to cut anybody off, so if somebody has any more for me, if not, I want to get back over to JFK to make sure that this site is set up for.
All I'm gonna say, I'm gonna pull it on record, one second. All I am going to say and pull it on record is that we make sure, Corporation Council and Madam BA, that all the paperwork is in place by tomorrow morning. Okay, if it can be done tonight, then so be it. That is important for us not to be held liable. God forbid something happens, okay? So I'm very excited. I have to tell you, I'm very excited. This is what we've been asking, you know, and I'm so happy for the community to know that you are able to go. Yes, they're going to ask if you have insurance. Bring your insurance card, bring identification. You have to show proof that you are a Paterson resident. The only people that will not be taken care of is if you do not live in the city of Paterson. Have insurance, you bring your insurance. But if you don't, you will not be turned away, you will be able to get tested. So I'm excited about that. The process and the way it needs to be done is that we have all the paperwork in. So I am looking forward to getting an email at whatever time saying, Council President, Council Members, we have all the documentation. Thanks.
Yes, thank you. Also, be mindful that, and I understand all the points that Councilman Flaherty was saying. And then, once again, I want to, first of all, I want to apologize to my colleague, Mike Jackson, when he brought up Mrs. Harvey and really gave him the chance because he wasn't ready to prove us in that meeting, you know? But congratulations for that. But there's other thing is that people that are not, they not legal status is not favorable. I call it like that. Also be attended, they will be taking care. The only thing they have to bring is their card from the consulate or their passport and approve the address that they live here, so.
Councilman, that's what I just said. There's no need to repeat that, that are stated. If I say that everyone will be taken care of, everyone is going to be taken care of.
Sorry, because I didn't hear that part, I didn't, you know, it's getting.
I just want, listen, I just want.
Then I got a question for them.
It's almost as a quarter to 10, okay? And I think that we've had a great meeting today.
But you opened, you opened, you know, you said, you opened a dialogue and the conversation. So you all had to have the chance to speak.
Councilman, and you're saying, I'm saying this, we don't need to repeat what you're saying.
President, we all been repeating both back and forth and I've been patient here. Then I say, if we have a question to her before she leave to the site. And the reason I'm holding is because I got a question for her because probably you guys are aware that also the six ward site and also Dr. Fongja Bonner Hospital is testing free.
That's what Councilwoman Rivera just posted before. He asked that question.
And now he posted before, but I found out on the Dallas store. And I don't get any upset, so you know, I just let you know that.
It's the communication, the communication funnel.
It's good if we do, bad if we don't. We've been requesting the administration and we put them in the line and we go out there and we tell them, we need this, we need this, and we need this. and we, we, we go out there and we, we, we tell them, we need this, we need this, and we need this. Now they do it. I don't know. And I asked Corporate Council, uh, Corporate Council, Corporation. Based on COVID-19, uh, when we in a state of emergency like this, i- i- if do we need to right away, uh, uh, have a, a meeting with the whole entire council to move forward thing? Or, or it could go alone with the process?
Corporation Council?
Any contract that the city enters into must be approved by the council. There are no if, ands, or buts about that. However, if there is an emergency, there can be a contract and that can be ratified because of an emergency situation. So that, that is how this contract can indeed be ratified. I just need the documents to do it. I will draft the contract tonight and it can be ratified at the next council meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Councilwoman Rivera?
Yeah, you know, I'm gonna get into, you know, you're the Corporation Council, but I remember from taking those courses a while back and I need to revisit them. There's still certain criteria that you could, that the BA could actually declare an emergency. Like if something breaks and needs to be, that, that's different. You could go ahead and you circumvent the procurement process, right? By just calling it an emergency, but there is a process to do it. Now, the pandemic, yes, you could classify it as an emergency. But you could say this was an emergency two months ago.
Every single.
So, so don't use the word emergency to fit, you know, to fit the need of getting something justified. Uh, I think we had the time to do, to do children's and if it's something to the council that we're supposed to be done, it's like we have now, we'll have to contract, we ordered those two other vendors that were not even vetted, right? Those two other vendors, we're gonna have to contract also and let's pay them. So I just, I just wanna put that out there.
And I don't disagree with you, Councilmember there, but at this juncture, I have to do what, what's legal to get us where we need to be. And again, I, I hear you. I'm just trying to get us there.
Thanks.
I'm sure that the BA, from understanding, there is a process to declare an emergency also. It's not just, oh, well, it's an emergency because it's a pandemic. There is something that, that the administration needs to do in order to declare the emergency. So it's not just laboring at an emergency and it's done.
Okay. Councilman Jackson?
Thank you, Council President. Um, and, and I can't agree with Councilman Rivera anymore. You know, we brought this to the table weeks ago and no one is trying to, um, derail this process. In fact, you know, we brought it two weeks, to the table several weeks ago. It hasn't been presented to the Board of Health, which it should have been. It should have been a discussion there as well. Um, it has not been, you know, every, every council member should have been a part of the, the conversation. Because as we're not being given, um, uh, numbers, we all have the pulse of our areas, um, which areas it, it need to be serviced. And, you know, we should have been allowed because we're getting the phone calls on, when is the testing gonna happen? You know, I'm extremely disappointed in the mayor because, you know, in years of him sitting as a councilperson and being in this position and, and being one of the main adversaries of the former administration on issues like this, to not be involved in this process and this very serious process is, is disappointing. And furthermore, just to say, well, we're just trying to get there, we could have been, we could have gotten there a lot sooner if there wasn't any pushback on, on the behalf of the, uh, administration. And then also, even if once the determination was made, you know, I don't care what company gets it. I mean, we wanted to be the best company. You know, it, it just so happens that I brought one of the most reputable companies to the table, but if, whether it's me or Councilman Rivera, Councilman Abdaliziz, whomever, as long as it's getting done. But it, but the process should not be negated. And this habitual habit of just negating the process and thinking we can circumvent it just by moving around the council has to stop, has to stop. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilman Jackson. Councilwoman Minz?
Um, just to Corporation Council, in doing the contract that you're gonna be creating, um, I'm not sure, does it require a shared service agreement with the schools? Or do we just have to put language in the contract? How do we, um, include that? Especially if they, I think they have a fan meeting tonight, I believe. But how do we include that information? Or how do we do a shared service without having a vote done from the school board commissioners?
So the school board is allowing, from my understanding, allowing the Sunrise to use their facilities. Their facilities are, are their agreement between them and, between the school board and Sunrise. That's a separate and a part agreement from the city's agreement. The city's major issue is whether or not the city is going to pay for the tests. That is the concern. Are we reimbursing Sunrise for any tests, any cost of tests that any citizen takes while, and while they go to one of these testing sites? Other issue for us is whether or not we are properly insured and indemnified if something goes wrong while one of our residents is there. So that agreement is between us, the use of the facilities and the school board facilities is between the school board and Sunrise. I actually just got a text message and just checked my email. There is insurance, um, in place. The city of Patterson hasn't properly indemnified. We are a, a second insurer on the policy. It literally just came in my email two minutes ago.
Oh, perfect. I just wanna make sure that the school district and the city are covered if anything happens on both sides.
And they actually sent me the insurance for the school district and for the city. So we.
What is the coverage amount for, on, on both sides?
It looks like, I, I have not reviewed it in total. It looks like it's a million dollars, but I need to read through it.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you very much. Roll call, Madam Clerk. To close the meeting.
Yes, Council President, roll call to close the public meeting of May 14th. Councilman Abdaliziz. Councilman Jackson? Councilman McCoy?
Yeah, that's good. I.
Councilwoman Minz?
It's a beautiful day in the neighborhood. It's gonna be eighty-five degrees tomorrow, Patterson. Make sure you keep social distancing and do not be out in crowds. Good night. My vote is yes.
Councilman Rivera?
Council President, in the future, before we call for a roll call to close the meeting, uh, can you please ask if we have any, uh, committee reports so we could, uh, at least, you know, eat the, the, the residents and, and colleagues a breath of what is discussed.
Councilwoman Minz, just saying, Councilwoman Minz.
No, no, nobody. Was it, is it a good idea? We all need to, uh, know what's going on in the committees. That way we know.
No, that, and that's good. And my apologies, as, as we all know, that is part of the agenda. It's been on the agenda for years. There is anyone that wants to report under commit can. So my apologies, Councilwoman Rivera.
So I'm not gonna go into the full committee report, but I just wanna let the residents know that uh, the first go around from the county, we discussed that City of Patterson was gonna get eight million, five hundred thousand, uh, five hundred thirty thousand, seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars, of which the city could use for COVID-related expenses. And that is why we need more services, as I stated from the beginning, we need more services to be provided for residents. And I'm not gonna turn this about me and all the things that I have said. What I wanna ask the administration is to look for other ways to provide additional services to the residents. Uh, I keep saying, uh, Madam BA, that we do, the mayor stated that he has volunteers doing deliveries for the seniors and, and, you know, the disabled. Um, I, I recommend that, given that there's a lot of people unemployed right now, give them a decent wage and maybe hire a lot of employees to do these deliveries and that is covered uh, by the SCARE Act. Uh, I'm sure you'll find other ways and we can sit down and, and talk about other things. Uh, we also, I know we're in the middle of roll call, but, uh, we also talked about, uh, several other things that maybe I'll bring up at our next meeting. I don't wanna do this during roll call. Uh, so my vote is, uh, my vote is yes.
Councilman Velez?
Um, be wise, stay safe, stay home. God bless you. Good night.
Council President? Before, I, I think there's only one question I need to ask. How much is charging for each test? Does anyone know? Does anyone know what they're charging per test?
Yeah, fifty dollars.
Administration?
I know.
Madam BA?
I, I don't know. Again, I don't know if the chief of staff does know. I think, because the issue is that it's going through the insurance or, um, through the reimbursement, but I, I don't know.
Wow. Madam President, I have the notes on it. I just have to go through them. And I don't wanna say something that, um, I may regret later. So if you can just give me a few minutes, I will have that answer for you. I just have to go through all my notes. I have a.
You can, you can, you can call me directly. Okay. Oh, you came back?
Just, I, I want to, I want to be around the shoes of water.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, Council President?
Councilman. Yes, Madam, Madam Clerk, uh, Councilman Abdaliziz is back. So I haven't voted yet. So.
Councilman Abdaliziz?
So yes, um, I just heard Council President's comment and to, as much as we, we, uh, we need testing and, uh, testing and I, and I, you know, supported the administration with testing, not knowing the cost of something, um, and not, not going into this and we have pretty, a, a couple of high-level administration people in here. Um, we have Corporation Council that's drafting the contract. We have the BA, we have the chief of staff that's handling the operations, but no one can tell us. What I'm afraid is abuse and waste, right? Uh, what I've seen in government, when, when you get federal doctors and mo- and money's coming in, that means, yeah, let's, let's build it at the cities and the governments, right? So everyone could make their money and go. The, the, the amount of tests, right? Just be pretty careful. From what I've seen, let's look at what our counterparts are paying. Let's look what, well, what's, what's, say county paying for their tests. Let's look at what other counties are paying. Because if they're paying fifty dollars and we get a contract and they're charging us ninety-five dollars for a test, that's a red flag. Let's not just say this is COVID dollars coming from the federal government. Let's spend away like it's a blank check. Because we've used those COVID dollars for other initiatives other than testing that are strategic. For instance, we heard about some Broadway, right? Let's, let's, let's talk about uh, naming our business districts as the businesses are starting to be allowed to open up, maybe start sanitizing the business areas and common places so people are not spreading. Hiring people clean up certain areas, hiring more officers to implement the COVID stuff. So let's make sure we're not being reckless with our spending and let's use our spending for more innovative ideas throughout the business districts. I just saw a video of an experiment, uh, in Japan where they use the black light, how in common areas the, the germs, if it were the virus, they put on one person's hand. It was on CNN. And they said, all right, everyone go eat at a, at a restaurant. And then they all touched everything, touched the handles, touched the chair, touched this. Every patron in that restaurant had that little cream, uh, the, 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 the little lotion on their hand in the black light. Some had it on their face. They didn't even know the person that had it. So to the administration, start thinking for COVID, um, initiatives for our areas. As the governors easing up restrictions on businesses, we need to be ready to sanitize and get ready. I know we did it in South Patterson voluntarily, not with the city, with the nonprofit, the businesses, and many residents throughout the city wanted to see that across all the business districts. This should be, uh, something that we could use COVID dollars that's in our regular routine for the city to enhance the cleanliness and sanitation in our city. So please keep an eye on the way we spend our money. Hopefully, the, the contract that we gave we passed today will help us make sure that we're not getting, as Councilman Jackson says, uh, taken advantage of by people from outside the city making the money and, and not giving us the best return that we have. My vote is yes.
And and, and so, i- if I may, and this is the reason why it's so important to have these conversations, the administration with the council. You know, we have, and, and I say this respectfully, but it, it's, it's a loving term that I use for, you know, our youngest councilman. I call him Jimmy Neutron. I, I really do because the way that he thinks, you know, sometimes we're just sitting down, just, you know, having something to eat and all of a sudden ideas start, you know, coming out and, you know, this is what it's about. And we wanna work with the administration, you know, everything isn't, you know, you know, punching. It's like, let's sit down and let's discuss this and get good ideas from your council members, right? So, um, Jackson, did you know?
No.
Oh, you wasn't here. Jackson is back, uh, Councilman. I mean, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So, um, I, I can't agree with everyone, uh, uh, anymore. Um, great points, Councilman Abdaliziz, and, and, uh, you know, it's very concerning. And we're talking about launching, in fact, the, the motor wheels are already in motion as the, um, um, as Ms. Fisher had acknowledged, that they, they've already begun to work to get these sites open. And we don't even know the BA as well as Corporation Council, as well as the, um, um, chief of staff, don't even, can't even tell us what the cost is. So that's very alarming. But, um, you know, we, we know it's a desperate need and we're willing to move forward. Um, the only reason I'm willing to give it my full vote of confidence is because we know the company has rendered the services, uh, uh, is, uh, is, is very fair and is the best company that's, uh, available to the moment. So, um, with that being said, my vote is yes to close, Madam Clerk. Good night, Patterson. And let's, um, let's continue to be responsible as a council.
Council President?
So, thank you very much, council members. Um, thank you to the viewers, to the administration. I'm just gonna say this and put it on record once again. I don't know why the mayor refuses to collaborate with us. I, I don't, I just don't understand it. Um, I've, I've tried my best to seek other individuals to have conversations. I've addressed the BA. I've addressed the chief of staff. Um, I don't know what else to do. He's not listening. Um, but if he is listening today, I hope that today serves, uh, um, as a reminder to you that working together, we can definitely do better things for the city of Patterson. Good night, Patterson. My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Council President. The votes are seven yes, two absent. The regular meeting of May 14th, 2020 is hereby adjourned. Good night.
Good night.
Nobody was absent.
Councilwoman Katn?
Oh, oh, oh.
Yes. Councilman, Councilman Abdaliziz?
No, Councilman Abdaliziz voted.